How are you? Thank you for being here. Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the North Brunswick Township Board of Education Regular Public Meeting. Today is August 28th. We could please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Ali. Mr. Brockman.
Here.
Mr. Carter.
Here.
Ms. James.
Here.
Ms. Keith.
Here.
Mr. LaBoree.
Here.
Dr. Patel. Ms. Toth.
Here.
And Mr. Wen.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Law, the public notice of this meeting, which included the time, date, and location, was distributed by 3:00 PM on Monday, January 29th, 2024, and Tuesday, March 19th, 2024, in the following manner. Posted on the bulletin board reserved for announcements in the board office, 25 Linwood Place, North Brunswick, mailed to the Home News Tribune's Start Ledger, NJ.com, and the clerk of the Township of North Brunswick, and delivered to the nine duly elected board members.
Good evening, everyone. We have a couple of presentations this evening, so I will turn it over to Mrs. Chiruca. Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. As you know, we have certain times of the year where we are required to make presentations to the board by requirements for the Department of Education. And you will see this evening, we will get a report on graduation rate and AP tests from Mr. Neller, principal of the high school. We will also get information on the Access for L's testings from Yesseni Morales and Mercy Chang. So let's ask Mr. Neller if you can come up to the podium, Mr. Neller, and I'll change the slides when you need me to. And if you could speak right into that microphone for us.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I hope everyone had a great summer. Sad to see it winding down so quickly.
(laughing). So are we.
Everyone have a great, really good weekend. It's my pleasure tonight to present on the 2024 graduation rate. I do want to say this isn't, it's not 100% official, official because the state doesn't actually send the rate out until August 31st. So we will have the official rate by next week. However, we have our preliminary rate based on the data compiled by our tech department, so I'm going to share with you what it is tonight. Next. So the state of New Jersey a few years ago introduced the adjusted cohort graduation rate calculation. It was actually 13 years ago. So they use a four-year and a five-year rate to calculate graduation rates for different classes. Next. So the four-year rate, basically the way it works is when a freshman arrives in our high school, the second they set foot in our school, they count as part of our graduation rate. So it takes the number of students enrolled in freshman year, and then we're responsible whether they stay in district or not to ensure that they move along. And then if they do unfortunately move to another district and it's not reported to us, they could count against our rate. So we put systems in place to track students when they do move away from our district because however number we have freshman year counts when they graduate their senior year. The five-year rate takes in the additional year after high school to see if any students who didn't graduate on time will graduate. And then that's how they compile the five-year rate. Next. So as you can see, and this is something we are extremely proud of at the high school, since actually 2019, our graduation rate has consistently been over 90%. We've, you know, had a great improvement from the year I took over as principal, 2017, when we had a 79.3% graduation rate. We put a lot of effort into improving it, and as you can see, over the last few years, we have achieved a graduation rate close to the mid-90% mark. Next. So the 2024 graduation rate, as of tonight, is 93.8%. We had 475 students graduate last June at Rutgers. The reason why we can never seem to get a little higher is unfortunately the NJDOE continues to count the students who enroll in the 18- to 21-year-old program, special education program, against us. So even though they graduate and they receive their diploma, they come back into school for an additional three years that's allowed under their IEPs, and we provide them with that opportunity to learn job skills and things like that, but they continue to, the state continues to count them against our graduation rate. Something I would love to change before I retire.[350.82][350.85](laughing). Because it's very frustrating, but that's part of the reason why we can never get to 100% graduation rate because of the way the current, the state currently counts graduates. So, you know, as I said, we're very proud of our rate, and we will continue with the class of 2025, which is very large, 517 students, to get them to graduation next June. Alright? So with that, I'll talk about our AP test scores. The Advanced Placement Exams are the college-level test administered by the College Board to students who are enrolled in one of our over 20 AP courses at the high school level. These exams are rigorous. They're off, we offer them in a variety of subjects, and they give students the opportunity to gain the skills and experiences colleges recognize. The College Board considers passing any student who receives on a scale of 1 to 5 a 3 or better is what the College Board considers as a passing score. Most colleges and universities will provide credit for students, but usually the student has to score within the 4 or 5 range, and it's up to the individual college if they want to provide or give the student credit for that course. But generally, the AP, the College Board considers 3 or higher to be passing. Next. I think I just explained that. That's the scale. So qualified, very well qualified, extremely well qualified is what students, students who achieve those scores receive a passing, is what's considered passing. Next. So courses where students excelled in AP testing. AP US History had 100% passing rate this past spring. AP Bio had a very high passing rate. Also, it's not on the slide unfortunately, but in the audience tonight is our AP Chem teacher, Dr. Lucille O'Reilly, and she had a 92% passing rate at finisher. So thank you. We also had students perform very well in AP Physics C this year. And then I especially want to highlight AP Precalc and AP World History Modern. We had offered AP European at the high school, but the the number of students taking the course each year was declining. So this year, we offered AP World History instead to students, thinking that that might generate more students to be interested in taking the course, and the numbers went up, and we had a significant number of those students. The first time any student our school was ever taking it received a 3 or better on the AP test. Same thing with AP Precalc. Students took, we used to offer a course called Honors Math Analysis for students at the high school. The longtime teacher, Mr. Parent, he retired, and with that, we transitioned to a new course that was being offered by the College Board, which is AP Precalculus. So those students also had a very high percentage of passing the first year we were offering AP Precalc. And we have two sections of that this year at the high school. So we're very excited about our AP test scores. Overall, 69% of students who took AP tests this year passed them with a 3 or better. And then you can see the numbers. So as I said, every student in US History passed the exam with a 3. 72% received a 4 or 5. AP Bio was 82%. AP Precalc was 88%, Physics was 88, and then World History was 70%.
Seems like it stuck. Sorry. No, that's the last slide.
Okay.
Here we go. Next.
So this past spring, our juniors took the NJGPA, which is considered their graduation state assessment that's required that they take. This was the second year that NJGPA was administered to the junior class. It replaced the former high school graduation assessment, HSBA. It's aligned to Grade 10 ELA and Algebra 1 and Geometry Standards. The reason why I like NJGPA so much better than NJSLA testing is that the cut score is 725, which is considered passing, whereas NJSLA has to receive a 750 for it to be considered passing. Next. So you can see in this, our Language Arts performance this year, so we have 479 students take the NJGPA test this year. 78% of them pass it and are considered graduation-ready. We do have, we did have some students who did not. There have other opportunities, which you'll see on another slide, to receive the passing score because the state does allow alternative assessments. But we will be testing them again in the fall in hopes that some of them will perform better and be able to successfully pass and be certified for graduation. If you look at this slide, you can see, it's actually, you see graduation-ready on the right. You can see that between the previous year and last, in this past year, we did improve overall in the number of students performing better and passing the NJGPA in Language Arts. Now, as far as math, our students performed just below the state average. You can see that 41% were considered graduation-ready. This class is the COVID class that went out in the eighth grade. And then for ninth, you know, part of high school, they were not present in our building. So, you know, we've been working with them on, in math, in improving math scores. So we're hopeful that this fall, they will, students who need to take it again will perform better. Next slide. And you can see that we did have a little bit of a drop-off overall in the number percentage of students who passed NJGPA math this year. Next slide. The other assessment pathways to graduation. So you may have had some students who, for whatever reason, didn't feel well the day of NJGPA. They didn't perform as highly as they should. They can still achieve that graduation pathway by performing well on the ACT, the Accuplacer, the PSAT, the SAT. If they score a certain score, they can achieve their graduation requirement that way. And a lot of students quite honestly do. You know, I do want to thank the Board of Education for continuing to support us in ministering the PSAT school-wide every October. We're going to be doing that again this year. And every student, grades 9, 10, and 11, take the PSAT, and we will test any seniors who still need a graduation requirement. Unfortunately, another pathway that students used to be able to use was ASVAB, which is the military test. And unfortunately, the state has decided, for whatever reason, I know Mrs. Chang probably knows better than I do, that now it's counted anymore as an assessment. I felt really bad. We have students this year who have passed the ASVAB, and we had to make him still, you know, take another assessment because the state no longer decided no one. So we do provide them multiple opportunities. We also provide students who may need extra support a class called Portfolio or Math Lab in their senior year where they can complete performance tasks, which we then submit to the state. We have never had a student who submitted a performance task not be certified for graduation. And as I said, we will offer opportunities for NJGPA retakes this fall.
That's it.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Neller?
Sure.
Comments?
Yeah, but actually, I'm very excited about our district's AP testing process where, you know, we as a district provide, pay for that to allow, you know, any of our students who wish to take an AP test to do so. I do have a question. I know, just from speaking with, you know, some students and stuff, there is a lot of pressure going into getting ready for AP tests. And I think during the times of AP testing, I know, some of the feedback I hear is that, you know, there are times when they all will have a lot of coursework. And there is times when certain, certain classes will be more lenient with, let's say, homework or, you know, assignments that are due versus others. Is there a way for us to maybe have a more kind of standard way to, to look at that? Especially if we are kind of footing the bill for these AP tests. We want our students to really have, you know, the time and, and put in that energy to study and do well. So just come and with that.
Thank you. And I do, I would be remiss not to thank you as well for, you know, we're, not every district pays for every AP test that a student takes. So I just want to thank the Board of Ed for continuing to support that every year as well. Our students don't have to pay for the tests that they take, so they can take as many as they want, you know, or as many as they're able to based on the courses that they've taken. So I do want to thank you for that, and I will take that consideration. You know, throughout the year, we talk about different things in our leadership team meeting, and we will, I will talk with them about when it gets closer to AP testing time in May, you know, talking to staff about blessing the workload for those students. You know, we'll definitely do that.
Great.
Anyone else?
Quick question, Mr. Neller. The ELA looks like there was 479 AP tests taken and 486 on the math. Is that normal to see, like, a disparity like that?
Yeah, sometimes, for whatever reason. Is it just because of?
Did you get, by the absence?
Yeah. It's just absences.
Okay.
Catch them in the fall. We'll try to test everybody.
Okay.
We, we, you know, Mrs. Chang and our school testing coordinators, they give every student every opportunity. We give makeups. We, you know, we really try to get everyone to take the test, but unfortunately, sometimes students are just absent.
Okay.
Definitely, they're pre-takey.
Great. Thank you.
Can you remind me, for what grades, is it 10th grade for NJGPA? They're taking it?
NJGPA is grade 11.
Grade 11. Okay. So for math, I'm just obviously looking at the numbers that that is where we had some dip versus incline. Do we know what, what subjects we're looking at?
Well, every, every junior takes it, but the focus of NJGPA is Algebra 1 and Geometry.
Okay.
Which most Algebra 1 students either take in eighth grade.
Right.
Or they take in ninth grade. And geometry, some take in ninth and some take in 10.
Okay.
That's what the state tests on.
Okay. I guess my question is, is it that they are too far removed? I know there's a lot of nuance to why the data is.
We were doing classes prior to it, and I know this year we're going to have more tutoring options for students to get ready for the NJGPA testing, which we're really excited about.
Right.
Because we think that might help them to recall.
Right.
So many information. Most of the students on grade 11 are taking Algebra 2 or a higher-level math class at that time, so that could be part of it as well. But we're definitely looking into, you know, more tutoring opportunities for those students prior to taking the tests this year.
One question I had. You mentioned the five-year graduation rate. Is the five-year graduation rate higher than the four-year, or is it not much of a difference?
It's usually higher. To tell you the truth, I don't check it that much because for me, the most important thing is the 93.8 or the, the four-year, because that's what gets reported out. And we, we've been, we've been really lucky. Like I said, most of the kids that count against us are still in our school because they're in the special education programs. But the last two or three years, almost every student who was eligible to graduate graduated. So I haven't really, I don't look at it as much as, as I definitely focus on the four-year rate.
Gotcha. Thanks.
Alright, thank you so much, Mr. Neller. We really appreciate your, your sharing with us this evening. And for our-
Good luck with convocation tomorrow.[1157.82][1157.85](laughing).
I thought I didn't have to do anything.[1161.18][1161.21](laughing). Script was that.
Gave them an assignment. So obviously, Mrs. Chang is going to present the Access for L's results with Yesseni Morales, our supervisor of ESL and World Language.
Good evening, everybody. This is the night we take our Access for L's show on the road. Typically, I combine the Access for L's with the DLM. You might be wondering where that is today. It's the alternate assessment. It's the assessment kids have to take in addition to NJG, SLA in some cases. But we are not allowed to release those scores yet, so today we're going to do access. And I'll do DLM in September with Mr. Harry from the Special Education Department. So I'm going to give a little background on the Access for L's, although I'm sure you're fairly like experts after my other three years of background. And then Mrs. Morales is going to give you the, the numbers. And she does, as you know, a nice job explaining how we're projecting, how we're moving forward, and maybe reasons why some numbers don't look as we would like them to. So we are required to give the Access for L's to our ESL students. Any student enrolled in ESL by the Global Services. And we are one of 41 states that uses the WENA standard. So it's a pretty common, a popular way to assess students. This is called the Assessing, Comprehension, and Communication in English State to State. So every state has their own version of the assessment, which is interesting. You can keep going, Mrs. Chiruca. So this test is administered annually. As long as the students are in the program, they must be tested because it means they have them tested out. There is a certain number they can reach alongside their performance in class that we can utilize to exit them, but if they're still taking the Access, they're still considered an ESL student. And even parents who opt their students out of ESL services, which is their right, have to take the Access for L's. So you could also have a student who's not getting any ESL services, who's, who has to take the assessment. These results are used in combination with a lot of our other assessments to make determinations about what programs are best for our ESL students. So you know, we do this in small groups. It takes us a long time. We do get a big window, a weak window. And there's a lot of preparation that goes into it because teachers have to be recertified every year. So they take a quiz. Mrs. Morales and I do a training. We can help them a little more than we can with NJSLA, especially because they don't speak English, especially the technology side. And we can clarify directions, but students work at their own pace using headphones for most of the assessment. This year, we tested between February 5th and March 29th in all four domains, reading, listening, speaking, and writing. They tested on times, but they always tell us how long they think the student should take, which is also interesting because some students take a lot less and some students take a lot longer. We have tiers, so depending on how they perform on the first tier, on the first assessment they take, it tells us where to put them on the next few assessments. There is one assessment they have to take in advance of all the others. Once they test, they receive a subjective score in all of the tested areas. And we do have the ability to exempt some students with very specific reasons from some assessments. Like this year, we had maybe a student who couldn't take the speaking test. So we are able to do that, but it doesn't give you a whole picture, so we try not to. We tested 505 students this year. That is 35 more students than last year. And we get a score in oral language, composition, literacy, and then an overall score. All of the students in grades 1 through 12 take the test on the computer. All the students in grades 1, 2, 3 take writing on paper, because that makes a lot of sense for them. And kindergarten takes a fully paper test, but this year, we were actually asked to participate in the field test. But this year, they're looking to change that, so next year, students will be taking kindergarten online. I'll be very curious to see how that goes. I mean, they're getting sapier, so hopefully it will go fine. There are five proficiency bands, and you know, we've discussed, all of these assessments have different proficiency bands, which makes it difficult to compare, but Access for L's is six. Did I skip a slide, Mrs. Chiruca?
Nope. Yep.
And you'll see at the end of it is, is this one band called Reaching. And Mrs. Morales can speak more to this, but you won't see any of our students in this band. And that makes sense because if they were in this band, they wouldn't be in ESL. So usually, we can exit them at developing or expanding, depending on how well they do on all the domains. So I don't want you to be worried that you don't see anybody at the Reaching level. Typically, across the state, students do perform in the entering, emerging, and developing categories. And especially if you have newcomers coming to our school straight from another country, have no English language skills, they're definitely performing at the entering and emerging. It's really more to tell us how to help them, so it's not punitive. So here are our results from this year, which Mrs. Morales will review with you.
Hello, everyone. So before I start talking about the data, I just want to let you know this is data. When looking at it, we're not comparing apples to apples because the students that tested this year may not necessarily be in, from last year to this year, they may not be represented in here because unfortunately, this population tends to be transient. Just to give an example, at the end of this school year, we ended with 507 multilingual students. But at this time right now, by end of July, and we had 457 that still qualify because most of them, 50 of them have already transferred out to another school district. So the data is always, always fluctuating. And just another note that when I started doing this presentation, we had 372 students that we tested. And this year was the highest at 505. So we have had a 35% increase just within two years. So this population is ever-growing and always moving. So it is a thump-a-loom target. So with the kindergarteners and the K through 4, we did see increases there. So, sorry, I have online. So with the, with the, we had a lot of new kindergarteners. We had 35 new kindergarteners this, this past year. So that's why you will see that we did have an entrance for 59% because we had a lot of new babies in our, in our department, I'm sorry, in our, in our, yeah, in our, yeah, my department. So, and, but at the same time, we had 17% of them go expanding. So the students that, those students had to be in our ECC preschool program, so that those students we do see to send, to see that jump. So we did see those students jump from to expanding. So you see that bookend of growth. So those students would be exiting our program because they would have received a 4.5 or higher. In our first grade, last year, we had 17 new first graders. So you're going to see that in our first grade, our entering and emerging numbers were a little bit higher than last year. But that's because we had a lot more new students that reported entry. So the, they can have the same language for English proficiency, so they would be scoring the entering and emerging. However, our second graders, they did a very nice job. They, we had an increase there with 40% of our second graders scoring in, in developing. And with that, we had 20 new second graders that we had, that had entered last school year. In third and fourth grade, we had some fluctuations there in our, in our numbers with very grueling, sorry, I can't go. We saw a decrease of 16% from the previous year in entering. We also saw a decrease in emerging. And, but however, we did see a 9% jump from the previous year in the expanding. And we had 15 new multilingual graders last year. So it's nice to see, we saw that growth in that particular grade level. By fourth grade, we had 13 new students. So we had entering, we had about, we had 24%, emerging 13%. So it wasn't much of a big difference from last year, from the 2023 to the 2024 scores. But we did see an increase of 14% from the previous year. So the students that we did keep in district did go up one proficiency level, so we saw that growth by 14%. However, because we had 13 new fourth graders, we did see then an ink, a decrease in the expanding domain, which would be where the cutoffs were with me. So we did, because we have such, a lot of newcomers, that's where we see the fluctuations in the domains. If we go to the next slide. So for our fifth grade, our fifth grade students, we had a decrease last year in the entering domain by, we had 23% this year, so it did go down. And then we had an increase in our bridging, so that we see that we have those bookends there once again. So our students have remained- So our students have remained with us in the program. We see, we continue to see their growth. However, because we did have 20 new, new fifth graders in our district, we did see more students in that, we saw students in the entering. But even so, they're still growing, and we're still able to move them along in the domains. For sixth grade, we have 14% in the entering and 20% in the emerging. However, we highlighted the developing and expanding because those students, we have shown growth, and we were able to see an increase in those particular domains. In grade seven, we saw an increase once again also in the developing and the expanding for those students. And in grade eight, we did, we didn't see, there was minimal change, but however, we did know that we had 8% of our students in the expanding. And then for our ninth, through 12th grade. For these students, we did test less students this last year. However, we did also have a lot of new students that entered our high school, multilingual students. And usually, by age 11, it becomes a lot harder to acquire a second language, and it takes a little bit longer for students to acquire that. So you're not always going to see that much growth that you would see in elementary from K to 5 versus 6 through 12, because by that time, it just becomes a little bit more difficult for people to acquire a language. But in the ninth grade, we had a 25% decrease there with our entering, so even though we did have new incoming ninth graders, they were still able to move them to the proficiency level and help them grow in acquiring language. And then we also saw an increase there in our developing. So our students are moving along. And then for 10th grade, we did see not too much change, but I did note that we did have an increase there for the expanding with our students. So for the most part, our 10th graders did, the change was minimal. For our 11th graders, last year, we did get a lot of new 11th graders. Actually, I think that was the biggest for us at the high school, with 18 new 11th graders that we received to the program. So we did see a 39% increase there from the, I'm sorry, we did see an increase from the previous year at 39%. And then we, however, we did see an increase also by 3% in the expanding category. So even though we have, we increased our scores in the entering, it's because we have new students that are learning the language, but at the same time, we're still seeing growth in that expanding section, so letting me know that our previous students, the students that we have in district, are still continuing to move up the proficiency levels. And that is all of, I believe, all of the, I'm sorry, no. And then grade 12, we saw a wonderful increase of 41% that I'm very, very happy about, because usually, we had 8 new students, 8 new 12th graders last year, so sometimes when they enter by the 12th grade, it's very, very difficult to see a lot of growth, but we saw a 20% increase from the previous year in that particular category of 12th grade students, so I'm very happy to report that.
Thank you. Any questions? Let me access for else.
I would, I just wanted to, I think it would be good, just like as a recommendation, like moving forward for this presentation, to include, I know Ms. Chang mentioned the numbers, students who place out, like including the number of students that place out, and then also like tracking the stable cohort of students, because I think, I know we do a lot of good work in the district, and for those students who do stay, I think it'd be good to just, you know, kind of zoom in on them so we can, you know, note some of the change that they're making in their, their benefits, I guess, in moving forward.
Absolutely. I did track them, and I track them more not necessarily by their proficiency levels, which is what the state shares, and that's what they focus on. I track them more by the scale score, because that's what tells me where the actual growth is within each of the domains. So I do, I do track them. It's just a big spreadsheet.
No, I know.
You do that in committee meetings.
Yeah, no, I know it's a lot, just, just throwing that, but thank you for your presentation. I appreciate it.
Anyone else? Hi, thank you so much. This is, this is difficult work and challenging, and it's really nice to see the improvements and the effect that we have on our students' language growth over, over time, and how we're continuing to hit the ones who, you know, may only be with us for a short time, and the ones who stay for a longer period of time. Thank you.
Great, thank you. We will move on to item six, our meeting minutes. Mr. Brockman, would you take item six, please?
Sure, Madam President. Make a motion to approve the following board meeting minutes. Regular public meeting, July 31st, 2024. Board retreat meeting, July 31st, 2024. And then the board retreat executive minutes, July 31st, 2024.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The minutes are accepted. Thank you.
Are there any communications this evening?
There are not, Madam President.
All right. Any old business, new business, or should we just jump to your?
No, we'll jump right to the administrative report. Great. So good evening to all our families, guests, and viewers here tonight. It is hard to believe that we are less than a week away from the start of the 24-25 school year. With each passing year, the summer seems to speed by a little more quickly. Maybe that's showing my age. But however, I do hope this letter, this finds you and your families having truly savored your downtime this summer and enjoying some rest and relaxation. As another school year begins, our district remains committed to creating a strong and positive learning environment for all of our students. We will continue to use the whole school, whole community, whole child model of health and wellness with a district-wide focus on the theme of be present. This poster in front of me on the screen, down below the screen here, on the dais, will be found throughout our district emphasizing our student and parent-facing focus on attendance, maintaining physical and the social, emotional health, treating other, one another with respect and kindness, and planning for mindful media use. New certificated staff arrived on Tuesday, August 20th, for the start of five days of orientation and professional learning sessions. Those ended yesterday. Dr. Frederick Johnson, our Director of Curriculum Instruction and Technology, worked with principals, supervisors, tech team members, coaches, and teachers to prepare a rich and full agenda for the over 70 new staff members who are joining the district. Teaching and certificated staff returned today, Wednesday, August 28th, for two full days of professional learning and preparation for the school year. Various orientations have been taking place at all of our schools. Please continue to keep an eye on our website for job openings, teaching positions, lunch aides, substitutes, class aides, bus drivers, et cetera, as well as back-to-school nights and community events for the month of September. For the year 24-25, we are recommitting this year to a balanced technology use through a focus to set of, a focus on tech or cell-free zones in our schools. In 2015, the board adopted policy 5516, which is labeled, entitled, Use of Electronic Communications and Recording Devices, ECRD, which is essentially, in our world today, a cellphone. Pre-pandemic, there was a lot of use of cellphones, but phones were mostly put away during the school day. But post-pandemic, that has changed, and students, and class, and teachers were all walking around with their phones on all the time. We saw a lot of earbuds and devices, like watches connected. It slowed down our networks, but it also slowed down the focus of our students. This policy states, "A student is not permitted to have turned on or used an ECRD on school grounds during the school day or when the student is participating in a curricular or school-sponsored co-curricular activity." All of our schools began last year to reinforce this policy. This year, we do so with an additional focus. Students will be expected to have any cellphones, earbuds, and connected watches turned off during the school day. MBTMS is embarking on a pilot this year with the yonder pouches to assist in creating cell-free school, cellphone-free school zones. MBTHS is recommitting this year to having clear expectations with students that phones are shut off, earbuds, and watches are put away. As the year progresses, we will compare how the two different approaches work. In all of our buildings, the expectation is that these devices are turned off and away in backpacks. Why are we doing this? Most of you have seen the articles and books, the Surgeon General's report focusing on the impact of cellphones on everyone's daily lives. It's actually more the apps on the cellphones rather than the cellphones themselves. And for students' learning, this can create devastating impact on student anxiety, the ability to form relationships, and even more deeply, on their ability to focus on tasks for a sustained period of time. The TikTok average, the average attention span of our students these days because of TikTok and other apps, is 19 seconds on their ability to focus before they jump to another task. But schools are in the business of helping students learn, and we need our students to be focused on their learning. Learning takes time and focus. It is our job to ensure that our students have the best possible environment in which to learn, and because of the addicted nature of the social media and these other applications, our students and, and most of us, find it challenging to stay away from these devices. Therefore, in order to meet our goal of raising student achievement, we must first take away those distractions and help students learn to focus again for a sustained period of time. This also means creating classrooms that are engaging for students and have the full presence and attention of the staff members as well as the students. Stay tuned for more information on this throughout the year, as we may, will be making this a big focus on our conversations and our work this year. We do wish everyone a safe and happy Labor Day weekend, and we will see you on Tuesday morning, September 3rd, for the first day of the 24-25 school year, and we look forward to making a great one. That is it for my report this evening, Madam President.
Thank you. Although we did not have committee meetings for the months of July and August, we put those on pause, we do still have constant updates that are coming through. So if there's anything to report, please jump in. We'll start HR. Mr. Brockman, anything at this time?
Not at this time.
All right. Education, Dr. Patel is not here this evening, so Mr. Wen, thank you.
Sure, I'm pinch hitting tonight.
Yes.
So I'll give you some high-level updates from, from the education side of things. As you saw earlier before, we had presentations for 2023 and 2024 Access for Ls, the NJGPA and AP results. We also discussed the various workshops and conference approvals. There was also an approval of the MOU between the MBTHS Science Department and State of New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection in support of the Trout in the Classroom Program as a student environmental education learning activity. There's also various approvals of updates for the 2024 and 25 school year. And just a note, for the math courses, need to be updated to meet guidance from the NJDOE, which must be in place by September 2024. There's also some updates to District Mentoring Plan for the 2024 and 25 school year, where requirements need to be submitted to the county office. There's also approval of the Magic School as a pilot this fall to provide hands-on experience with learning and how to utilize AI in the classroom. That'll be very exciting. And also, there's approval for the MBTHS school, oh, sorry, MBT Schools Three-Year Technology Plan between 2024 and 2027.
Thank you, and I appreciate you jumping in. I literally just tapped him a couple minutes before this meeting, so thank you. Business operations, Mr. Legori.
Sure, Madam President. Within the business operations realm, I guess most of it starts on page 26 of tonight's agenda. There's a couple of amendments to some items from June pertaining to instructional computer site license motions, some minor cost changes in funding sources that needed to be updated. There's an item on there about disposing of a shipping container at Maple Need. We're going to approve some various grant applications and grant-funded purchase agreements this evening, as well as various instructional and operational computer site licenses. In addition, in terms of purchases, under item three in tonight's agenda, there's purchases of custodial supplies, John Adams gym divider curtain, bathroom stall dividers at three of our elementary schools, some additional cameras, which is adding about $10,000 to that project, an additional visitor management access point adding about $5,000 to that project, a service agreement with Eastern Datacom to support the telephone paging and communication platforms. We then have an approval this evening with the Department of Agriculture's plan to reduce the funds in our food service fund that exceed a three-month average expenditure. Just a point of order, that it was actually addressed during the fiscal '24 school year when we purchased a walk-in refrigerator freezer, a dishwasher, and some cafeteria tables. We have various transportation expenditures, starting on page 29 this evening, that deal with our ESY out-of-district routes, our out-of-district fiscal '25 school year bus routes, and parent transportation routes. These would be where parents are actually required to transport the students to and from school each day. We have various charter school transportation issues on tonight's agenda, including memorializing the approval of the charter school shared service transportation agreement, and then approving the 10 charter school bus routes related to the charter school shared service agreement. And that would wrap up our business operations goings on.
Thank you. Negotiations, Mrs. Keith?
Yes, Madam President. I'm happy to say that the negotiations team met on August 13th with our teachers' union. We would like to thank Ms. Pastner, Ms. Herrick, their entire leadership team for their collaboration and their continued partnership. Best of luck with convocation tomorrow, and we look forward to a great school year for all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that wraps up everything. So item number nine, Mr. Carter, would you please take?
Yes, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to approve the administrative student and committee reports.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All the reports are accepted.
Thank you. At this time, we will review our agenda. The board has received this while in advance. We've had some time to review it, so we'll go through page by page briefly. Any changes are in bold, so we'll start on page three. Page four and five. Pages six and seven. Eight and nine. 10 and 11. 12 and 13. 14 and 15. 16 and 17. Pages 18 and 19. 20, 21. 22 and 23. 24, 25. 26 and 27. Some of the things that Mr. Legori was covering in his report are listed on these pages, 28, Pages 30 and 31. 32, 33. And 34. We can jump back to page two. We will open up to the public, to do a public session on agenda items only at this time. If you would like to speak on anything listed in the agenda, this is your time. We ask that you come up to the podium, state your name, sign in, and you'll be given three All right. Seeing none, can I please have a motion to close the public portion of the meeting?
So moved second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? This session is closed.
Thank you. Ms. Keith, would you please take item 13?
Yes, Madam President. I would like to make a motion to approve the following consent agenda items. Personnel, curriculum, miscellaneous, finance items 1 through 3, and transportation.
Second.
I will do roll call. So, Mr. Brockman?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes, to all consent agenda motions with the exception of curriculum instruction, item 1C.
Thank you. Ms. James?
Yes.
Ms. Keith?
Yes.
Mr. Legori?
Yes.
Ms. Toad?
Yes.
And Mr. Wen?
Yes.
All the motions, resolutions are approved?
Thank you. All right, at this time, we will move to page 33. We will have a public session on any matter. This is your time. If you'd like to come up and speak on anything, we ask that you come up, state your name,
I live on this, because it's now it's a municipal residence. I'll write it if you want, but I just want to put it to you.
Just fill it in. Yep.
Good evening, North Carolina Department of Education. My name is Beth Pastner, President of the MBTEY. Good to see you.
Good to see you all tonight. We are also pleased that we reached a tentative agreement with the Board of Ed and look forward to a future ratification of that contract. We have been hard at work the last day, the last, you know, week really, if you think, or two weeks if you think about our elementary teachers. I'm a high school teacher, so I don't have as much classroom set up as them. But as I set up my classroom today for the 20th time, which was kind of crazy for me to think about, after I did that, I walked around the high school, got an opportunity to see our teachers hard at work, and they absolutely are hard at work. We welcomed back our 10 new employees today, and everyone is ready to go for this school year and is looking forward to it and very excited. So we are very much excited for that as well. We look forward to a continued year of collaboration between the MBTEA and the MBT Board of Ed. You will see us at the back-to-school nights, helping the district sign students up for free and reduced lunch again, like we have done the past several years, because we know how important that is to not only the district in terms of funding, but also our students who want to make sure that they're getting fed. So I want to wish everybody a happy Labor Day weekend, and wishing all of our students and parents and everybody a great, successful school year. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? Okay, seeing none, could we please have a motion to close the public portion of the meeting?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? This session is closed.
Thank you. At this time, we'll move to go into closed session. Whereas Section 8 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 PL 1975, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances presented exist. Now therefore, be it resolved by the North Brunswick Township Board of Education that the public shall be excluded from discussion of and action upon the hearing after specified subject matters. The general nature of the subject matter to be discussed is as follows: legal and financial matters and negotiations. It is anticipated at this time that the above stated subject matters shall be made public at such time as the need for nondisclosure no longer exists. This resolution shall take effect immediately. Can I please have a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We can go into closed session.
Thank you.
Thank you, and at this time we will adjourn.
Show moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone to post? The meeting is over, adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.